Good evening, everyone. The first thing we have to do before we start the business meeting is I'm going to ask board members for a motion to move us out of executive session. We were in executive session prior to this meeting and one of our members was logged on by phone and so it was difficult to try to get to a place where we needed to make that motion out of executive session. So I would entertain a motion to move us out of executive session and into open session.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Norm, seconded by Graciela. Oh, I hear an echo.
Just a minute.
Barb, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Raymond Navarro Jr.
Aye.
Mr. Norman Walker.
Aye.
President Martha Rice.
Aye.
Ms. Graciela Villanueva.
Aye.
Okay.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thanks, Barb. I just wanted to get that on record so that we can cleanly move into the business meeting. Thank you all for joining us tonight. This is the June business meeting for the Yakima School District Board of Directors. The end of school is nearly upon us. Our agenda tonight. We do have interpretation services.
Yes, would you like me to offer?
Yes, please.
Si hay alguien aquí que necesitan los servicios de interpretación, por favor levante la mano.
Thank you.
There's nobody here.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is a pledge of allegiance. We typically have students do that, but since we're so close to the end of school, I'm going to have to remember how to do that by myself. So if you all could please rise. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next, we have the Yakima land acknowledgement and Norm Walker will be reading that this evening.
Today, the schools of the Yakima School District rest on the ancestral lands of the fourteen confederated tribes and bands of the Yakima Nation. The people of Yakima Nation inhabited more than 12 million acres across Adams, Benton, Schlan, Douglas, Franklin, Grant, Kititas, Clickitat, and Yakima Counties. Today, we honor those native peoples who are tied to the land through history, legends, and culture. We acknowledge their descendants who live in the world today. We thank the caretakers of this land who have lived here and continue to live here since time immemorial. An acknowledgement is a simple, powerful way to show respect and a step toward correcting the stories and practices that erase indigenous peoples' history and culture. It also honors the truth. As a school district, we will continue to build upon our relations with the Yakima Nation. Also in line and keeping with that, many of you may have heard the news about the recent finding of 215 children buried at a school in Kamloops, British Columbia, and those children are part of the same nation that these belong to. I'd like to take a moment of silence to honor those children. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. Just a reminder, since we are in a school building, masks are required while we're in the school building. If you do not have a mask, there are some available outside of the door that you entered. If you wish not to wear a mask, we would invite you to join us virtually. Thank you. Next on our agenda are reports from members of the board. Do we have any board members that are, have a report that they would like to share? Okay. I do want to acknowledge that we have, typically, we recognize accomplishments during this point in time. And while it's not on the agenda, I do want to congratulate Dr. Trevor Green on receiving his doctorate in the past month. So congratulations, it's well deserved. Dr. Green, superintendent's update?
Thank you very much, Director Rice. It's a great honor to be here again in front of you and to be gathered in this session in person. We greatly appreciate being able to reunite in this way. The first thing I'd like to share with the board and the public is that we have a wonderful news through our Stanton School. And in accordance with the requirements and procedures of the Association of Educational Service Districts in the state of Washington, Stanton Academy, under the direction of Dave Chaplin, has received the AESD accreditation approval. So they are going to continue to be an accredited institution for the next six years. They are commended for the following: their development of personalized supports, support actions using relevant tools such as scaffolding improvement science, social emotional learning, and ACEs touchpoints, also for incorporating student surveys and building toward their overall path approach moving forward, and the passion for student success. And if the board will recall, when we originally went into the shutdown during COVID, Dr. Darling and myself, we visited all of the schools and talked with each of the staff members and were very, very impressed with the flexibility, adaptability of our Stanton staff. And so I think this is just another feather in the cap of Dave Chaplin and our wonderful staff serving our students to the best of their ability, and we're very proud of their recognition for their accreditation. In addition, with the board this evening, I'd like to share that under Dr. Darling, we have submitted our plan for ESER III funding. It was approved by OSPI. So that actually did happen here in the last week. We completed all plan elements, provided an attestation and date of school board approval, posted the plan on the website, and named the equity analysis tool used in the development. And that the funding will be available to us most likely around end of summer. Yes, Dr. Darling?
Wonderful, thank you. And then we had a great session today. We've been doing a lot of leadership development over our multi-tiered systems of support strategies with all of our district leaders. I think we have Shelby here tonight? She's not, she's been leading a lot of our work, so we're happy for her leadership, for the leadership of our teaching and learning department. Thank you, Dr. Darling. And the last item that I would share before passing this to our Assistant Superintendent Stacy Locke, is that we had a presentation that happened to OSPI, our Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction, through Nob Hill, the leadership of Erin Thomas. Dr. Darling, would you be able to give us a little bit of information about that presentation?
Certainly. So we have eight schools in our, well, nine schools in our district that are identified as schools that are school improvement.
Is your mic on?
Is, yes, so I'll just get, I'll get closer. So we have a handful of schools in our district that are identified as schools that are in school improvement, Nob Hill being one of them. And they are assigned coaches and school improvement coaches through OSPI. And the coaches that have been working with our district have been very impressed and they wanted to highlight one school, which was Nob Hill. So today, they had what they call a convening with local ESD and other schools and ESTs across the state, and they featured the work that's going on at Nob Hill. So Erin Thomas, if you know Erin, it's never herself, she always brings her team because she highlights her teachers and her staff. And they presented on the work they're doing around using data to grow students, using data to have conversations about teacher practices. And so it was fun for Trevor and I to sit in his office and watch Erin highlight her team and have them share examples of evidence they've used and where they've made improvements, even during this difficult challenge of fully remote this year. And so, yeah, we just wanted to take a moment. We're proud of all of our principals, our school leadership, especially the work happening in Nob Hill.
Nice, that's good to hear, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Darling. It was, it was a great thing to see the way that she did present and highlight her staff. Speaking of staff, I did inform the board, but it would be good to tell the public here this evening that we did have a significant change of leadership here in the last several days. We have a longstanding, excellent, wonderful principal at Davis High School who has done some reassessment of his priorities and what's important to him. And he will actually be leaving our district pending board approval in another district, which I believe is happening this evening, or maybe it happened last night, but I haven't heard about the announcement yet. But internally, we will be moving a principal to Davis High School. Heather Hasty will assume the role of principal at Davis High School, only the second woman in the history of Davis High School to lead the pirate ship. So we're very excited about that opportunity. She has served there as an assistant principal for the past nine years. She has experience at the central office, both in the state of Washington and in the state of Kansas. This is her dream job, which is great. Dreams aren't enough to make things happen, but fortunately, she does have the support of her administrative team. I had the opportunity to speak with all of the assistant principals together at Davis High School, and there was unwavering support for her moving into that role. And since then, I've received some valuable feedback as well from the Davis staff about how pleased they are about the quick appointment. We typically don't look at appointing a role such as this so quickly, but given the fact that we are in June and most of the hiring across the state is done much earlier, we were very fortunate to have such a wonderful leader within our own district. And she had actually accepted a position as executive director in our central office, but when the Davis position opened, we had a conversation initiated by her about how excited she would be to take that role. So I'm sure at some later date, we will bring her in front of you, or we will be at Davis, and you will feel that excitement coming from Heather Hasty, and we're excited for her. So to conclude my superintendent's report, I would pass the baton to Stacy Locke for the update on our COVID information about what's happening around the district and also in our county. Stacy?
Thank you very much, Dr. Green. I would like to first start about, speaking briefly about the county report, I'd like to thank Jewel Bromley, Assistant Principal at Davis High School, who's provided me with the latest information on Yakima County. Our daily count is fairly consistent, above 20 and less than 40 over the last week. Our 14 and seven day rates are at 129 and 73.4 per 100,000 respectively. Hospitalizations have now dropped as of today below five, and our positivity rate is at an all-time low at 5.3%. So numbers are going in the right direction. In regard to the work in Yakima School District, we had 12 investigations last week, and since January, we've conducted over 1,100 investigations related to COVID. We had one positive student last week, and there was no testing of school employees during the last seven days. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. It's excellent news moving forward, so thank you.
Thank you, Stacy, and back to you, President Rice. Any questions?
Any questions from board members? Excellent, thank you for the good report, Stacy. Next, we have the monthly financial updates. Becky?
I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Green.
Thank you, so we will tag-team this. We're always, it's always wonderful to be able to present the general fund budget and financial status update again, in taking us through the executive summary. You'll note that May 2021 items of interest, there are three. One is that we did receive the first payment of 1.1 million in transportation stabilization funding, and we're excited about that opportunity. So there is funding for stabilization being released to the districts. The second point would be that we received actually some funding that we were not expecting, and I will turn to Becky. Would you like to talk about the institutional enrollment stabilization funds?
Sure, thank you. These funds, we received $102,000, and they are to support the Ridgeview Group Home and the Juvenile Detention Center. And this is for enrollment stabilization, so the comparison back to last year and what we've lost due to the pandemic.
Thank you, Becky. And then the third item in the executive summary is our enrollment, and we are down by an additional 30 FTE as compared to April. So we are at 2.9 below our budgeted FTE and our annual total of 468 under what was originally projected. If I'm correct, and I'm looking over at Becky, we're talking around $4 million, correct?
Yes, it's actually about $2 million, just in BEA funding.
$2 million in BEA, okay, thank you. As we move, would you take us through the next part of this?
Certainly.
PowerPoint?
So these are the, these next slides are the enrollment that you're familiar with, the cash flow, the revenues, the expenditures, payroll, and materials and supplies. They're, these are trending as normal, so unless you have any questions about these, we'll move to the pandemic slide. So these are the pandemic costs, and as a reminder, this has started in March of 2020, and through today, there's about $10.7 million, or over $10.7 million. And you can see the different categories there, the PPE, staff, and cost for distance learning, and then our childcare. If you flip to the next slide, you see the funding sources, and you can see that the CARES funding is the bulk of the funding source, and we are just about depleted on that, just about $9,000 left. And you can see the total at the bottom, the 10.7. And then we have a new slide for you, and this is our ESER II funding. And we will switch now to the thinking of learning recovery expenditures. And so I'll invite Dr. Green to talk about the 10 points.
Thank you, Becky. As you look at the slide with the 10 points of the ESER II funding, Dr. Darling led the superintendent group of our district through a very focused exercise to make sure that we were engaging around our spending of what we had done in the past and looking at the percentages across our entire system. He collaborated with Becky Neeson on this work as well. So as you look at the 10 categories, you can see the percentages to the far right, so reopening schools safely for in-person learning, 19%, physical, mental health, and well-being supports, 11%. And we're looking at these as opportunities to provide direction on spending of ESER funding over the course of the next three years. As you know, we've gone through our ESER I funding and are currently in our ESER II spending funding, and will engage, as you heard me say earlier, in receiving ESER III funds by the end of the summer. Dr. Darling, do you have any additional insight that you could provide on this list?
So we did not create, we did not create these 10 points, they were provided for us by, through the CCSSO, which is the chief, the
Chief State School.
Yeah, Chief State School Officers Consortium. And Mary Alice Hushell, who's from the Gates Foundation, was part of writing that, this work. And so we, as Trevor said, we took this work and we figured out what are the priorities that we currently spend our funds, our BEA and our levy funds, along with what do these buckets have the biggest impact on students, on student achievement, on accelerating student learning, on school safety, on staff safety? And then we figured out how we would allocate these fundings. So part of it is for our tracking mechanism internally, to determine where we're spending funding and does it align with our current spending model. That being said, if we overspend in one area and we underspend in another, there's no harm done there. It's merely for us to be able to kind of a guideline for a starting point. Since nobody in the history of education has ever done this before, this is the most amazing plan ever been created for the Yakima School District.
All right, thank you.
That. So you can see that we have amount available of $22.6 million. As of today, we've expended $68,000, and we have encumbered another one and a half million. And you can see the categories that we're spending in. Number three, which is address COVID learning gaps for students. And then number seven, explore and implement new education delivery models. And eight, closing the digital divide. As we go through spending these each month, this will be your new slide to review.
Becky, is there a sunset on these funds? Do you know?
For the ESER II, it's September of 2023, and the ESER III is 2024 September.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions from the board on Becky's report?
I have one additional comment to make. One of the things that we also did is we allocated 20% of this budget to the buildings themselves to identify, so they could spend this money for the individual needs of each school. For example, at Martin Luther King, Maria identified 14 kindergarteners this last year who did not engage at all. So rather than try and retain the students, she's hiring a teacher to work with just those 14 students, and they will get kindergarten and first grade all next year in their classroom and be ready for second grade the following year. So each building is able to take this funding and provide staffing or resources specific to their needs. So we're already seeing a lot of creative, so we haven't encumbered very much, but they just got the money this week, and trust me, by next week, there'll be a significant chunk of it already spent or encumbered.
So can I ask a question? Is it 20% across the board, or is it prorated based on the size of the school?
So that's a great question. So what we did is we took this 20%, and then we figured out what percentage of the student population is at each building. For example, for early learning, it was about 2.1%, and Barge Lincoln, 3.1%. So then we give them that percentage of the 20%. So it's equitable across the whole district. So based on their student population size, that's how much the funding they received.
So the larger the school, the more money they get?
Exactly. So Stanton receives about probably $60,000, Davis $600,000.
That's good to know, thank you. Any questions from board members? Okay.
I would just make one more comment.
Sure.
Just to clarify that the money that was released to the schools, the 20%, it's, there are standards and requirements around that spending. It's around student learning and achievement, so it's not to be spent on any what people would perceive as frivolous items. It's all going back into assuring that learning continues and that we're focused on helping to recover any of the learning loss that occurred.
Do their individual plans need to be approved by central office?
Yes, Rob?
Yeah, actually, they approve between myself, the Human Resources Department, and financial, and our financial department. So actually, at least once a week, we have scheduled meetings. We've already done our first one, where we review each of their proposals to make sure they meet the criteria that's already outlined in these 10 buckets and outlined by the federal government spending guidelines.
Right, it keeps us from getting into trouble.
It does, and it also helps us be able to share the creative ideas that these principals are doing with other principals, so they can kind of replicate each other's work as well.
Excellent, thank you, Rob. Anything else on this agenda item, Trevor?
Nothing more.
Okay. Next item on the agenda are comments from the public on agenda items. Barb, do we have anyone who has signed in? No? Okay. All right, then we will just move along. Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is comprised of items that are either routine in nature or are items that have been delegated to the superintendent, but by law or rule, the school board is required to approve. Any board member can remove any item from the consent agenda for separate action and/or discussion. Tonight's agenda items consist of approval for Reverend Donald Davis Jr. to attend the National School Board Association Equity Symposium, which is in July. This is a virtual attendance. Next is approval of minutes for May 10th, 18th, and 24th. Next is budget status reports for May 2021. Next, we have approval of personnel actions, followed by approval of out-of-endorsement assignments. And finally, notification of approval of warrants for May 2021. Tonight's warrants consist of one group of ASB warrants, one group of capital fund warrants, two groups of general fund warrants, and one group of payroll warrants. Does any board member wish to have anything removed from the consent agenda for separate action and/or discussion? Okay, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Raymond, seconded by Norm. Barb, could you call the roll, please? Is there any discussion while Barb's making her way to a microphone? Okay.
Mr. Raymond Navarro Jr.
Can't hear you.
Mr. Raymond Navarro Jr.
Aye.
Mr. Norman Walker.
Aye.
President Martha Rice.
Aye.
Ms. Graciela Villanueva.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you, Barb. Next item on our agenda is the final reading for our equity policy. Dr. Green, do you want to kick this off?
Yes, thank you, our equity policy work. We're very excited today to have, to have a couple of our students here this evening. Could you stand? Thank you. So as you look out into the audience, you will see that we have Valeria and Connor here this evening. Very excited to have two of our students with us, one from representing our Eisenhower School and one from Davis. It was not planned that way. These are students who have really risen to the top in providing opportunities for us to address what equity truly means in our, in our, in our district. Over the course of the last year, we have worked very diligently with our community, our faith-based community, our business partners. We brought together an equity coalition representative of all of our different groups, including a superintendent student advisory council and a writing team, which included two students in the eight-person group. This was led by Dr. Pimpleton, generously co-led by me as well, but a large share of the work certainly was Dr. Pimpleton along with our community. And before I turn the reading of the equity policy over to Connor and Valeria, I would just like to state the first sentence, which I think is very, very important when we're talking about equity within our district. And it states, "The Yakima School District promises to ensure a safe, equitable, inclusive, and quality learning environment so that every student thrives and succeeds." And I think that is a statement that really clarifies why we are talking about, not only talking about equity, but putting out goals for us to achieve as a district and start to assess our systems and how we can improve to make sure that we are reaching every student with the appropriate scaffolding and support necessary, not equally across our system, but equitably across our system, because we know that every student is different and has varying needs and different services that are required. So I would call upon, at this point, Connor and Valeria, would you please share the information about our equity policy with the board?
Our vision is for a school system that focuses on every student every day, strengthening community through education. Delivery on these objectives requires us to name, confront, and disrupt inequitable systems and practices that contribute to predictable disparate outcomes on the basis of group memberships, including race, class, language, culture, ability, gender, sexuality... class, language, culture, ability, gender, sexuality and citizenship. This policy articulates our commitment to collective action to transform systems that have historically privileged a few towards educational justice are all in partnership with students, families, communities and staff. Because race continues to be a persistent predictor of student academic, post-secondary and life outcomes. The Yakima School District is committed to leading as an anti-racist institution. New and existing policies, programs, professional development and procedures are to be regularly reviewed, analyzed and assessed through a racial equity lens. The generation, allocation and management of district resources should also be exercised with a focus on expanding access and opportunities for those historically marginalized by school systems. This commitment is expressed through the following pillars presented in alphabetical order with no suggestion of hierarchy. Climate and culture, leadership and partnerships, talent recruitment and retention, teaching and learning.
Climate and culture. The district honors the diverse communities and populations, both past and present, that have inhabited this land. To ensure safe, equitable, accessible and inclusive environments for students, families and staff, we will model a welcoming culture and environment in every school and classroom across the district, actively foster and sustain positive relationships and connections with students, families and staff, provide multiple and varied opportunities and resources and nurture, celebrate and support cultural diversity and nurture a culture of advocacy by centering student voice, experiences and perspectives, leadership and partnerships. The district recognizes the value of creating and sustaining essential partnerships with students, families, communities and staff, and that leadership for equity and excellence requires working together, disrupt structural inequities and historically unjust systems of power. To do this, we will promote shared leadership and transparency through equitable collaboration and power sharing with staff, students, families and community members directly impacted by the decisions being made. Invite and help surface critical perspectives from historically marginalized communities and engage them in our improvement efforts. Build relationships with families and community to support improved communication and dialogue. Partner with individuals, groups and organizations who reflect the cultural diversity of our student and community. Center the voices, perspectives, knowledges and logics of Black, Indigenous and other peoples of color. Have a track record of successfully engaging with historically marginalized communities in ways that expand opportunities and reduce disparities. Engage students as partners in their own education and in the work of school and district improvement by routinely accessing the insight and perspective of diverse student voices for promoting student initiative and involvement, providing social, emotional and enrichment opportunities that strengthen relationships between students and foster a sense of community and camaraderie within schools. And discontinue partnerships with organizations who are not making a priority of this work.
Talent recruitment and retention. The district will actively strive to recruit, support and retain a workforce that reflects the rich diversity of our student body, where all employees feel valued and celebrated by actively searching for recruiting and employing racially, linguistically diverse and culturally competent personnel at all levels of the organization. Supporting the establishment of affinity support networks and mentorship opportunities for underrepresented groups. Engaging all school's personnel across cultural reflection and dialogue to build awareness of their own identities and privileges and address the impact of biases and microaggressions in the workplace. Providing relevant professional development to enhance all employees' knowledge of and skills for eliminating racial, ethnic inequities. And providing opportunities for staff to safely and openly provide feedback on the work environment and surface concerns.
Finally, teaching and learning. The district is committed to high-quality teaching and learning that supports each student without exception in reaching their highest potential. This is to be achieved through curriculum, educational materials, instructional practices and data use routines that reflect and affirm the racial and cultural identities of our students and staff. We will foster an adult learning culture that is rooted in the shared vision for student learning, high degree of teacher efficacy and effective systems and routines that empower creative thinking and problem solving. Nurture a joy for learning for both students and staff. Support student growth through guaranteed viable and culturally responsive curriculum inclusive of ethics studies. Provide opportunities for all students to see themselves reflected in the curriculum. Utilize evidence-based culturally responsive instructional practices, educational materials, resources and technology. Routinely collect, display, disaggregate and analyze existing and new forms of data to improve student learning and adult practice in the service of educational equity. Provide multiple pathways for success through an assets-based approach and reduce the over or underrepresentation of any particular student group. Intervention, enrichment and advanced course offerings such as special education services and accelerated programs by eliminating biased practices. The board directs the superintendent to develop and implement a system-wide racial equity plan with clear accountability and metrics, which will result in measurable improvements in academic, social, emotional health, safety and belonging for Y S D students and staff. The superintendent shall regularly report progress on the plan and outcomes.
Thank you. Thank you, Valeria. Thank you, Connor. Do we have any questions for either Connor, Valeria, myself or Dr. Pimpleton?
Any questions from board members? Okay. You want to do that now? Okay. You have to kind of get up on that mic.
I'll do that. So, yes, I just want to thank Dr. Pimpleton and our two students that are with us today for guiding us through this process of developing this policy. It was personally an eye-opening, a very significant learning opportunity for me and at times an arduous one. It was challenging, right, to think about some of the philosophies and theories and the writings that were presented to the board that I believed that occurred for me. So I wanted to mention that. I believe the board knows and the community knows my stance on some of the topics that we talked about, that we discussed. And I'm not going to go into those today because I believe I've articulated those. You know, I've struggled with this. This has been a difficult and a challenging decision in terms of this policy. And, you know, personally, just my personality, I do tend to focus on kind of the philosophy and the theories that underlie the writings that we studied the last two months. So but and I, so I do also appreciate Dr. Pimpleton's explanation during our last meeting and how some of my, my concerns may or may not impact the work that we're doing. So I do thank you, Dr. Pimpleton, for explaining that and making it clear for me. So ultimately, I have chosen to focus more on the intent and the purpose of this policy. And, you know, that is to address the racism and how it impacts the education of students in the Yakima School District. You know, focusing on closing and then eliminating those disparities that our two students talked about just seconds ago, that exist between students in Yakima School District. And also ultimately to eliminate racism and oppression in not only in our school district, but in our community. So I believe that we'll do so by uniting as a board, as our superintendent, teachers, staff, administrators, our students, parents and ultimately our community in addressing these racism and oppression. So and also to be a board that leads or that is transformative in change. And that's, that's the one thing that I take from that policy as well, that transformative change that, that I'm excited about being a part of, that we're having an impact in our community. And ultimately that all students are successful, that all students achieve and reach their full highest potential. So that's, I wanted to thank Valeria and Connor. I really, really valued that and appreciate you meeting with me about a month ago. And that really helped me to understand from a student's perspective. So thank you once again for the work, your leadership and helping to develop this policy. Thank you.
I would like to make a comment before you guys vote, if that's okay.
Sure. I mean, you were a key part of this. I guess we could probably let you say a few words.
Me, another student, Cleo, who unfortunately can't be here, and Connor, we've worked with a bunch of teachers and staff members and a lot of people in our community to develop this. And it took, I think it started in near December or November where we started. And it's been eye-opening and it's helped me see that racism from a different lens. I always assumed that racism could be direct and it's someone telling you off or disrespecting you. But it can be racism can affect in microaggressions in small ways in school districts, out of school. And this policy really reflects a lot, especially as me, as a Latina. I really appreciate being able to write this and having the opportunity to voice what I have to say about my opinion and my thoughts and ideas on what's going on in the school district especially. And the fact that you guys are taking your time to really listen to what we have to say is really important and really special. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Valeria. We very much appreciate that this has taken a while. And not only were you all students during this period, but you also had your own lives and other activities. But that you felt strongly enough about this to devote your time, which is a precious commodity. And you devoted your time and your energy and your thoughts and your wisdom to this. And as I sat here and let, let the readings and the words wash over me, it had such a profound effect on me. More so than just reading the words silently to myself, to hear your voices, read those words, really was very, very powerful. And so I want to extend my appreciation to you and Connor and Cleo, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. And all the other students and staff members and community members who are a part of developing this policy. This is a foundational policy for our district and will serve us well for many, many years to come. So thank you very much. Connor, do you have anything you'd like to add?
To expand upon Valeria's thoughts, thank you for honoring student voice in this very long process. We've gone through a very enriching system of co-design and looking at the incredible diversity of other perspectives across our district. And I'm very grateful to be part of this process among my fellow students and very grateful for the attention the district has attuned to this policy and hopefully in passing it very soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Connor. Any other questions or comments from board members?
Oh, go ahead.
I'll just add, this is, policy is a culmination of work the board started maybe two years ago.
At least.
Initially having conversations about an equity policy and what that should include and not include. And so it wasn't until the students got involved that really helped pull the policy together along with Dr. Pimpleton and the other staff and community members that supported the effort. So I also had the privilege to speak directly with Valeria, Connor and Cleo. And it was really touching and encouraging to hear the thoughts directly from the students, the things that, the word choices they used, the, their thoughts and feelings in general about the policy. And so that was really encouraging to hear. And I'm just so supportive of this policy and I'm so excited to see the district have a really, really strong equity policy and statement and that we've been really intentional with using the words that we're using. I'm just very excited to have heard the student voice very loud and clear in this and excited to see this.
Raymond, did you, oh, Nora, go ahead.
Well, I think Raymond and Graciela much summed up my feelings. I'm thrilled to see this policy. I would say that the things that are articulated in it are various things in my own career and education for over forty years have been pieces that I've worked for. And to see it all put in such an articulate document is just a thrill for me. And it's a thrill to have the community and the schools and the students creating that policy so that we all own it at this time.
Raymond?
Yes, I'm just wondering if Dr. Green or Dr. Pimpleton can kind of just briefly kind of talk about the next steps. What is the evaluation, that kind of stuff, just to remind me on that. I'd be interested in just, just real brief explanation.
I can go ahead. Dr. Pimpleton, if you'd like to add anything, then let me know. If not, then I will go ahead and respond to the inquiry. The last paragraph of the equity policy statement lays out the following. "The board directs the superintendent to develop and implement a system-wide racial equity plan with clear accountability and metrics, which will result in measurable improvements in academic, social, emotional health, safety and belonging for Y S D students and staff. And then the superintendent shall regularly report progress on the plan and outcomes." So this first part, as we talk about a policy, lays out the direction that we need to go as a district or that we are declaring through the policy. Now the work begins on coming up with the measurements and implementation of the policy. If you were not following along or do not have this in person, the four pillars that were mentioned both by Connor and Valeria have several different bullet points under each category. And each of those bullet points, in my mind, represents a system within our school district that we will then assess against our equity policy and determine measures and outcomes and then the reporting back to the board. So at this point, we, this is the, this is the joyful moment for me because this is the moment between the policy and not having to do any work around the policy after tonight and hopefully an approval of the policy. We are definitely being directed to roll up our sleeves and, and improve what we're doing systemically to provide equitable opportunities and supports for all of our students through this equity policy. But more importantly, through the work and what that will look like at an elementary level, middle school level, a high school level across our system. So unfortunately, at this point, I cannot tell you what that would look like. But I'm interested in having a deeper conversation at some point with the board about a proposed timeline because there is a tremendous amount of work. And this is not something that we could probably turn around in a month or two. There's going to be significant work across our district to make sure that we are addressing this systemically.
Does that answer your question, Raymond? Okay, good. Dr. Pimpleton, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, my phone's blowing up because I know that Director Davis wanted his statement to be read and I have that. So I'll share what Director Davis wanted added and also respond to that last question. So from Director Davis, "I have had the opportunity to be a part of numerous discussions throughout the development of the equity policy, both as a board member and as a participant in the district equity coalition. I have read and reread the most recent draft on multiple occasions. This is something that is long overdue for the students and families in Yakima and will help to bring focus as we move to implement the district strategic plan. It has been particularly special for me to see how throughout this process, the voices of our students have been centered. They are our future and they are leading us in the way we should go. Having been a part of the civil rights struggle in the sixties, the pursuit of equity, racial and educational justice is an issue that is close to my heart. Now is not the time to be timid or to sugarcoat the challenges we face. It's time to put our words into action and this policy is the right step in that direction." That's from Director Davis.
Thank you for reading that.
He had a family emergency and that's the reason why he could not be here today. And I know this has been something that's very important to him. And meeting with him prior to accepting this job even, it was his heart for this work that actually was influential in me deciding to come to the Yakima School District, hearing him and a group of students that we met with initially, who were talking about the importance of these sorts of issues. With regards to what happens next. With regards to what happens next, hopefully there will be a little bit of celebrating. I think when we read the policy, there's a lot of sense underneath of, you know, there's things in here that we're not doing or that we're aspiring to do. But there's a lot of stuff in the policy that schools are already trying to do and that teachers are already moving in, in that direction. And so my work with schools is going to be first to say, what are the things in here that we're already trying to do? That we already have some steps moving forward? As Superintendent Green said, the MTSS learning that we've been doing over the last couple of days has highlighted a lot of things that are connected to this policy. So I think celebrating the things that we're already doing that are in here will be a nice piece of that. And then the development of individual plans of where do we go from here? What do we need to learn in order to be able to begin to do the implementation? There is a contract that's being circulated up for an equity audit with the Insight Education Group, which will be looking at different documents, having interviews with leaders, with students, observing some instruction in the fall. And they will be making some recommendations and identifying some areas and priorities for us based on that. And that will help us to be able to develop the plans of how we're going to move forward to implement the policy. So we definitely will be moving right away into what are the measures and what does it look like? And how are we going to know what, when this is actually taking place? But really having the picture really clear and having our student voices be a part of that. This is a very important first step. And I think this is really the model policy for the state of Washington. So, thank you.
Thank you, Marcus. I would certainly be remiss if I did not extend my appreciation to you for your work with this and for your leadership in helping to bring focus to something that the board has been talking about for a couple of years now. And we just weren't sure how to get here and you helped us get here. So thank you so much for your work, your, your individual effort, your work with the community and the students and all of the stakeholder groups who were part of this process. We couldn't have gotten to this point without you, that's for sure. Anything else, Mr. Superintendent?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. This is on our agenda for action. And then lest there are other questions or comments from board members, I would entertain a motion for approval of Policy 0550.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Norm, seconded by Graciela. Barb, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Raymond Navarro Jr.
Aye.
Mr. Norman Walker.
Aye.
President Martha Rice.
Aye.
Ms. Graciela Villanueva.
Aye.
And if we could cast a vote for Dawn in absentia, we would. Carrie's 4-0. Thank you so much. Thank you all for all of your hard work. I guess, you know, this part of the work is, is beginning and, and now we are looking forward to the next part, the next part of our journey with this. Okay, next part of our agenda, next item, is permission to approve purchase of secondary Spanish adoption materials. Dr. Darling?
Thank you, Director Rice. So this year, whether we look at it, we had an opportunity to, well, we were forced to adopt a new Spanish curriculum for our secondary program because the current, the curriculum that we were using was being sunsetted. And so nothing like a pandemic to make people excited about having to jump into a new curriculum. But you also probably not find a more dedicated group of people than the secondary Spanish teachers who really saw the need begin to overhaul that program. So I also think it's fitting that the person who presents this is Dr. Sean McGinni, who is, what, 14 days away from becoming Superintendent McGinni at the Vice Hamline Valley School District. And so I'm going to turn the time over to him.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Darling, Madam President, members of the board. I have the distinct honor of a contingency of about a third of our 13 secondary Spanish teachers who worked extra effort for a year, taught me a ton. I am an elementary teacher by trade and so everything I got to do from them, I learned from them about this. So we're going to hear a lot from them. So I have the honor of having Maria Chavez Seja, who is our bilingual TOSA, but also former Spanish teacher here at Eisenhower High School. Megan Anderson Riley, Davis High School, Spanish. Guye Perez, Davis Spanish High School, IB. And Jamie Holden, Washington Middle School, Spanish. So there are many more. As you know, it's summer vacation. So I'm honored that they decided to hang out with us on a Tuesday night on summer vacation. So without further ado.
Good, good evening, school board members. The Spanish curriculum adoption, I'm really pleased to inform you that it aligns to our goal number four. And that is to create in our students bilingual, bilinguine by graduation. And the goal is that all students will have the opportunity to be culturally competent, academically successful and prepared globally for the job market in two or more languages. It also aligns to goal number five, persistence through graduation and beyond. And that is that all students will graduate being career and college ready.
Hello, good evening. I'm going to talk a little bit about how, the process that we went through to gather input for this adoption. So first of all, expressing our gratitude to Dr. McGinni for really putting this together. He started the process with having us talk about our Spanish, current Spanish classes. And, and you may be aware, but I was not aware that we have actually 54 Spanish classes in the Yakima School District currently. And 20% of those are directed for our native Spanish speakers and 80% for our students who are not native Spanish speakers. So a lot of gratitude went out to him for his leadership. We had 13 secondary Spanish teachers involved in this process, along with three assistant principals also participated. A lot of gratitude to Maria Chavez Seja, who was just like a person who brought us all together, really expressed a lot of leadership in this. We wanted to also bring in our student voice. It was challenging during the time of the pandemic. But we were able to administer a student survey to 359 students, asking them about their current Spanish class that they were in, their own linguistic experiences. Did they grow up in a Spanish-speaking household? How did they feel about our Spanish classes? Did they feel like they were learning their culture was being represented in the class? And some takeaways that they had, things that they wanted us to know about their Spanish classes. And we also had a lot of our teachers, secondary Spanish teachers, help put together some great videos for the Community Curriculum Review website and survey.
Good evening. So currently in the Yakima School District, the secondary students have several pathways to, in their pursuit of becoming bilingual and bilinguine in the Spanish language. All four middle schools and Eisenhower and Davis offer traditional Spanish courses of Spanish 1, 2 and 3 for students who are learning Spanish as a new language. Of course, in our school district, we also have many students who come to us from other countries, who have received even often formal education in Spanish or have grown up here locally in a home where they speak Spanish. And so they come to us with a stronger foundation in Spanish. And so for those students, we offer heritage and native Spanish courses. In these courses, they focus on becoming more literate and formal language to enhance their ability for their language proficiency and also especially in reading and writing, because a lot of them don't come to us with those skills.
Good evening. At Davis High School, we also have two years of honors and two years of IB Spanish. These classes promote a worldwide multicultural curriculum and develops cognitive language proficiency from a high school level to a university level. All right? It is AP Spanish. It's offered as one-year class and it is taken after two years of regular classes. This class focuses on cultural and language in the four domains, listening, speaking, reading and writing.
As a committee, we are recommending for Spanish 1, 2 and 3 track, the Authentico text curriculum from the Savats publisher. What a few of the strengths of this curriculum that the committee really appreciated was the authentic approach that the material is represented in. Even as Spanish 1, 2 and 3 students, the students are learning from authentic resources. And these resources are very engaging and this serves as a springboard for the learners to learn their reading, writing, speaking and listening. Another advantage of Authentico is it is very standards-based on the actful standards that the foreign language teachers use. And finally, it has a very strong digital site that offers many resources to support the learning that the students get in the classroom. For the native Spanish or heritage Spanish track, we are recommending the Galleria from Vista Higher Learning. And we found some of the strengths from this curriculum to be that it's very flexible. Many of our students come to us with different levels and each activity in this curriculum has three different levels. So right in the classroom, we can differentiate instruction for the different levels of the heritage speakers. There is also a super site, which the publisher calls it, and it's continually updated with relevant and engaging resources. So this curriculum will be relevant in the digital platform for many years to come. And finally, within the curriculum, it prepares the students for the IB and AP programs so that when they are ready, they can move on to further their Spanish education.
This committee also recommends Diverso for, from the MEP education. And Diverso would be targeted for honors Spanish. Honors Spanish, it's a class that goes from 9th to 12th grade. And it, it also addresses the IB curriculum. It prepares, is a preparation to, for the students to go into IB Spanish. IB Spanish, it is offered in SL, which is the standard level, and HL, which is a higher level. And the curriculum, it is, this committee recommends its Spanish education. And for the first time, we are very extremely happy that we are going to have a book. If you approve, they would address and support that their, the students' individual development and the IB curriculum. On the other hand, at IC, we have Temas, which is from Vista Higher Learning for the IP Spanish. And we are renewing, we recommend to renew license and upgrade online platform. And we kept, we kept the same curriculum for the IP Spanish.
So the real question, how much is it going to cost? So I think it's important to note as we look at the numbers for cost, that it's not just textbooks we're purchasing. But one of the requirements I asked them was that there was going to be an e-text component. As the board knows, we went one-to-one this year and we're going to continue that. So there's multi-care licenses on the e-learning side of the house as well. It's all enclosed in one, you know, one package price. So on the left-hand side of the slide, you can see that the curriculum totals will come to roughly $215,000. We spent about $20,000 on professional development this year and then we'll continue doing that next year as well for ongoing support. And then one of the pieces that weren't highlighted in the curriculum is that we've been looking at a supplemental literature piece that's an E-component called Flangu, which provides Spanish literature to students with acts like it's, lots of books online, lots, lots, abundant amount. They can put in more and more. So, and on the right-hand side, you can see the breakdown of all five recommended curriculums by price for, that's quoted. So the total comes out to roughly around $243,000.
Is that the end of your presentation?
We have one more, but if you have questions, go ahead.
No, let, go ahead and finish.
Finish it off? Okay, all right. Well, the committee really wanted to leave with you a couple of our next steps because, you know, like I mentioned or hopefully mentioned, we really appreciate this opportunity to come together, to be able to collaborate middle school through high school across buildings. And we really feel this need to continue this collaboration across the district. We know that this is part of our strategic plan, making sure we have 50% of our students receiving the SEAL of Bilinguacy, 50% of our middle school students in world language programs. And so we really need to make sure that we have consistency and strong world language programs across our district. And so that's something that we believe very strongly, we need to continue this collaboration between all of our buildings. We also are wanting to look at a district-wide implementation of a placement exam. One thing we've noticed as Spanish teachers, our students come in varying levels of proficiency and we want to make sure that they're in the most appropriate placement for them. As I mentioned before, 20% of our classes are designed for Spanish speakers, heritage speakers and 80% for non. But we know many students are coming in, a higher percentage of our students have a home language of Spanish than 20% in our district. And so we need a placement exam to make sure that we're placing those students in classes according to their proficiency level so they can be successful.
And that will lead us to the next step, that it's pending heritage Spanish classes, offering it in all the schools to reflect our community makeup and to accomplish our goal number four, bilingual and bilinguine by graduation.
And to end, our committee believes in a strong Spanish core and to be able to accomplish and for students to attain the SEAL of Bilinguacy. And I just want to give a little, I know when we first started, we had 60 students attain the SEAL. Our numbers now are up in the 300. And I know they're going to get a lot better when we start testing students in the middle school. And with dual language coming in, we want to meet kids where they're at. And I know that our students are going to excel because they're going to be even more prepared. So we, as in the Spanish department, really need to provide rigorous academic Spanish instruction that really supports students need, students that are Spanish speakers from home and students that come in learning the, the language for the first time. And thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from board members? Go ahead.
Not a question, but a comment. I want to extend my thanks to each of you and to the other committee members that aren't here today. I appreciate that you all have included student voice in your process and solicited feedback from the community as well. I especially like that you're honoring, excuse me, heritage or native Spanish speakers. I think that's something that is often overlooked. And I think back about, when my dad and his family moved to the United States from Mexico, he was 13 and was placed in a special ed class simply because he, he didn't know the, the English language. And so the fact that we're now, as we implement the curriculum, able to honor a native Spanish speaker and build upon their skills rather than assume they're deficient in some way, I think is really excellent and I'm really encouraged to see that. So thank you so much for, for all of your work on this.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Superintendent, do you have something to add?
You know me, I'd always add something. I, I try not to, but since you pitched it over to me, I, again, gracias por su tiempo, gracias por sus esfuerzos y apoyar a los estudiantes aquí de el Distrito escolar de Yakima. I have a special place in my heart for these teachers. When I, when I started here, I started as a Spanish teacher at Wilson and then Eisenhower. And I remember when we started, back in the day when I was here, I would have native students come into my class in Spanish 1, where they're learning basic vocabulary. And it really felt like it was criminal to be doing that to our students and to pilot, at my time here at Wilson, native Spanish courses and then have that happen at the high school and see the achievement of our students all the way up at the state level, winning state essay contests. I know that Davis had a longstanding tradition of having multiple state winners through essay contests. But it all starts with the foundation of our, our teachers at the middle school level and then up through high school. So I'm, I'm really excited for the opportunity. So I'm really excited for the opportunity that we have in front of us to provide materials, resources, to elevate the outcomes for all of our students. And this is one of the things that we talk about when we're talking about equity and how we can address the needs of all of our students. And thank you so much for your work, for calling out our strategic plan. That, that makes me happy every time I hear it, because the board here, this was the board that approved the work on the strategic plan. And to see that it actually is giving the direction that we, we talked about and we worked on with the community is amazing. And then seeing, of course, the outcomes that we'll then scaffold together with our equity policy. So thank you again for your time this evening and for the wonderful presentation.
And I would add my congratulations on providing us with a really quality review and recommendation. Thank you to Sean and to your cohort of, how many, 13? Teachers who, during a really difficult year, took on the challenge of curriculum review and provide, bringing to us some excellent recommendations for future Spanish curriculum that will really move us in the direction that we, that we need to move and that the community want us, wanted us to move towards. So thank you very much, ladies, for being here with us tonight. Please extend our congratulations and thank yous to your, your colleagues who were on the committee with you. And also, congratulations to you, Sean, on your new position. We wish you well. Okay, if there's, if there are no, Rob, go ahead.
All right, so we asked that the Board of Directors approve the purchase of secondary Spanish world language curriculums, resources, and professional development in the estimated amount of $250,000.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Norm and seconded by Graciela, that the Board of Directors approve the purchase of secondary Spanish world, I can't see, world language curriculum resources and professional development in the estimated total amount of $250,000. Is there any discussion? Barb, could you read the roll, please?
Mr. Raymond Navarro Jr.
Aye.
Mr. Norman Walker.
Aye.
President Martha Rice.
Aye.
Ms. Graciela Villanueva.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you, Barb. Thank you, Sean, and thank, thank you to the team. Okay, next item on our agenda. You know, you get to a point in your life where bifocals are too far away and the regular glasses are too close. Next item on the agenda is permission to renew the contract with WSIPC, for the 2021-22 school year, for the annual cost share and infrastructure service cost share. Stacy?
Thank you, President Rice. Background information, the district data center will contract with WSIPC to provide support, maintenance, enhancement of WSIPC services and develop future services, as authorized by RCW28A.320.080 (3), and RCW28A.10310.180 (3), group purchasing and/or bidding for data processing services or related services may be part of the activities of a cooperative. WSIPC also provides hardware hosting for the Yakima School District. The contract renewal is in the amount of $351,624. The 2020-21 contract was in the amount of $353,808. Requested action, that the Board of Directors grants permission to renew the contract with WSIPC for the 2021-22 school year annual cost share and infrastructure service cost share.
Are there any questions from board members? I would entertain a motion that the Board of Directors grant permission to renew the contract with WSIPC for the 2021-22 annual cost share and infrastructure service cost share.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Raymond, seconded by Norm. Is there any discussion? This is a renewal of an existing contract. Barb, could you read the roll, please?
Mr. Raymond Navarro Jr.
Aye.
Mr. Norman Walker.
Aye.
President Martha Rice.
Aye.
Ms. Graciela Villanueva.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the permission to award a bid for the Eastside Schools Restoration Project. Stacy?
Yes, this was presented last week, and Assistant Superintendent Anthony Moretto stated that we would resubmit it for this week with adjusted, we went back out for bid. So in the background, this is for Adams Elementary School, Hoover Elementary School, Martin Luther King Jr. Elementary School, and Ridgeview Elementary School for Phase I of redoing the parking lots. So the background information, RCW28A.335.190 requires the Board of Directors to solicit bids or items or work that exceeds $75,000. Four elementary school parking lots are in need of repair, Adams, Hoover, Ridgeview, and Martin Luther King Jr. These repairs are needed to restore the parking lots and other walking areas before deterioration causes more issues. The engineer's estimated cost of the project is $2,751,865. The following vendors submitted bids, M. Savaney Construction Incorporated, and Central Paving LLC, $2,402,363.14. The winning bid will be M. Savaney Construction Incorporated. They were the lowest bidder and met all the requirements.
Are there any questions from board members?
The only question I, the only question I might have is, it's obviously the low bidder, but there are a lot of degrees of quality in paving work. And it's interesting to me that they're able to do it for so much less than the engineer's estimate. And one of the questions that comes up is, sometimes that cost can be reduced by not doing the underwork, you know, the foundational work. You can do a, an asphalt surface, and it'll look nice for a year or two. But if you haven't done a quality job of the base work, of the gravel and the land and all the buildup to a quality service in two years, that work's not going to look real good. And so I'm assuming that we've done due diligence on the quality of the work that they're going to do on that. I just, it's nice to have a good deal, but it makes me a little nervous when it's too much of a good deal.
I can say that, that I just texted Jay Balcom, since Anthony's not in the state at this point in time, who told me if you did have any questions, Director Norm, that he would respond to that. So I just did ask him if they're doing the underwork, as you described. I've recently just had my driveway re-asphalated, so I know what you're talking about when it comes to the underlayment and the gravel. And if it's not being done appropriately, yes, it works, looks nice for a year, and then it falls apart, so. Trevor, did you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and add something here, Norm. I, I know that Anthony Marietta, who's, who's leading this charge, is not here with us. And I think you bring up a very good question. I, I know that he has been very aware of preventative measures that will benefit the district in the long run. I do not know the details around what, you know, what the intricacies are in looking at these parking lots. It very well could be a situation where we do not have to address the underpart of the asphalt, because it's, we're doing preventative measures. But I can't speak to that at this time with him not here this evening. So I would just submit that I don't, I don't subscribe to the trust me approach either. So if the board would like greater detail, we can certainly bring those back at a later time.
Norm, are you asking that we delay decisions?
I think if we can delay to get a little more knowledge of what's happening, without putting it off so that we're not, you know, we want this done, obviously, before September. But, you know, I don't want to, I, I just, it just makes me a little nervous to see those, those figures be so far off.
We do have another meeting next Monday. Do you think we could get answers to these questions by then?
Yeah, I, I do, I, I do. He's back on Saturday. I know that what you brought up, Director Walker, was brought up by Anthony, if you recall, last meeting, where he was actually surprised at the low construction costs. My suspicion would be that it's back here, because it was verified. But without having the conversation with him at this point, I would, I would actually recommend that we put that off until next week. It's only one more week.
And that won't have a negative effect on schedule or anything like that?
I, I can't answer that question.
It would at least push it back a week. I don't know beyond that.
Well, we have until September, right?
Right.
Okay, we are going to pull this agenda item then and revisit it on Monday, at our Monday afternoon meeting. Okay? All right. We've reached the second opportunity for comments from members of the public. Barb, has anyone submitted to speak to the board? I can't hear you. No? Okay. All right. Mr. Superintendent, do we have a need for executive session?
We do not have a need for executive session. I would mention one item of potential interest.
Okay.
And not, potentially not for discussion tonight, but I did want to bring up that we had some very successful graduations.
We did.
We had great feedback from the Davis and Eisenhower specifically, and the outside graduation. And I would just put it out there that if the board ever wanted to entertain a conversation about what it could look like in the future, we could maybe do that at a later date.
Fortunately, graduation wasn't yesterday.
You are wise beyond your years.
Oh, I don't know about that. Okay, that was.
I would just like to comment on the graduations, and that they went very smoothly. And, and, I mean, the students were, behaved really appropriately. The crowds behaved appropriately, the, they went off without an obvious hitch. So I know sometimes there are little things that don't happen well, but they just went really, really well. And it was, it was a delight to meet the students.
The beautiful part of it was that this was the first time in this year that all of the students in the graduating class were together, all in the same place at the same time. Which, when you stop to think about it, it's just a little bit odd. But it was, they were wonderful graduation ceremonies. Sarah did a wonderful job working with the high school staff at each school. And I heard wonderful things from each of those high school staffs, commending her for the work that she did. She, it was, she made it seamless for us.
Excellent. I'll make sure I pass that on to her. Thank you.
I told her at the end of one of them, and they've kind of all run together now, but, I'm, I would, I said, I would imagine that doing, coordinating all of these graduations is a lot like running a three-ring circus and the elephants have just escaped. She agreed. So please extend our appreciation to Sarah. Trevor, please extend our appreciation and congratulations to the high school staffs and the alternative staffs as well. They were wonderful ceremonies. They each were unique in their own right. And I, I only heard good things from people who came up to me afterward and said how much they appreciated the venue, how much they appreciated the ceremony. And I think the kids had a good time, too.
If I may have a comment?
Sure.
We'd be remiss if we didn't mention John Pleasance, who worked hand-in-hand with Sarah to help get everything ready to go. And he did an outstanding job also.
John did a wonderful job with, with the whole setup and all of the audio. Oh, my goodness. You know, like, I know how difficult it is to try to set up a room like this. I mean, I think I know. But to try to do that in a stadium with an overflow seating area, it was just yeoman's work. So I know he didn't do that on his own. He had a whole cadre of students that helped him. But it was, it, it went off flawlessly. Anything else from board members? Okay. Anything else for the good of the order, Mr. Superintendent? No? Okay. Then we are adjourned. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Have a safe drive home. Our next business meeting is July 27th. We can understand if you have other plans, but we would invite you to join us if you're so inclined.